Please.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Good evening to my fellow board commissioners, to the public, to staff. Thank you for joining us tonight. We are tonight going to be listening to or learning more about the four-year CTE strategic plan, planning process. This is our board work session. And so, Christian, would you mind talking to us, to everyone about the format? Thank you.
Sure. Thank you, Commissioner Richardson. Just remember for the public, the board work session is for the board to kind of dig in on a topic and an opportunity for conversation. So we'll have a presentation, then at the end of that, there'll be opportunity for board members to discuss what they just, you know, discuss the presentation amongst each other and ask staff questions. There is no public comment with the board work session, however, you can continue to engage with the board office by sending your letters and advocacy related to CTE. So I'll now turn over to Dr. Pfeifer.
Thanks very much. I hope everyone's able to see this all right. Please let me know if not. Well, I appreciate the time to be able to spend with you this evening and share with you an update on our work related to CTE and career readiness. CTE is career and technical education. And it has, has long been in this district by many other names of the way that we have trained many of our young people and our graduates to be prepared for the workforce. And so I'm excited to share with you today some of our thinking. I'm joined by my colleague Kumasi Vines, our Director of Career Readiness, who will actually give, share most of the presentation with you, but I'll just introduce us. So this evening, you will hear more about our vision for career readiness across the whole district for all of our students. You will get an update on where we are related to CTE programming placements, which we highlighted on September 1st at the Teaching and Learning Committee. And so it's great to have a chance to come back and share this with all of you. And you will hear this evening how we went through our process for making decisions, just to give you a sense of what that process looked like, who was involved, and how we plan to move forward. So one thing that I want you to take away this evening is that career readiness includes career and technical education, but it is not limited to career and technical education. So if you walk away with one thing, please let that be it. And as we're thinking through what we're doing as a district, we have recognized that we need to ensure that we have supports for students that will help them to be career-ready, even if our students are not in CTE programming. And for those students in CTE programming, we want to ensure that those students are getting the best experience that will help prepare them for life after they graduate from city schools. So as we did this work, we found that we gave, had many conversations with our community and we're continuing to have them. And one of the consistent things that we heard was that families were prioritizing having training, knowledge, and skills that would get students on the path to an in-demand, high-wage career. And so that's what families were prioritizing. We heard that loud and clear. We had eighty, eighty-one different meetings, and there are still more that are actually even happening tonight. So we heard our families on that. And just as a note, there's an opportunity for us to share a survey link so we can hear more from families who are engaging with us this evening. Secondly, we recognize that in order to ensure that our students are career-ready when they leave city schools, we're going to need the commitment of our whole community. In one of our school meetings, I really appreciated a group of alumni we were speaking with, who essentially said to us, "Why did you wait so long to ask for our help?" Right? And I think that, that really is the direction that we're going, whether it's with our alumni, with our industry partners and business community, with philanthropy, with our families and students, our teachers, our school leaders, higher education. We want this to be a collective partnership of helping Baltimore students get ready for careers. As we often say in our office, every student needs a career, and there are many paths to get there. Finally, we will be sharing with you a variety of specific CTE program changes. And I want to be very clear that those program changes will be in place by the 2324 school year. So as we're talking to you now, these, we have tried to be incredibly thoughtful about how we have planned this. As Kumasi is about to share, we have been thinking about this for several years. We've been engaging about this for the last, the better part of a year. And we are going to think through how we move forward thoughtfully, knowing that we, there is a sense of urgency because we recognize that we're not serving our students right now as well as we need to. But there also is a real need for us to be careful as we move in order to allow students to be able to complete their pathways in as much as possible in the schools where they've started them. And to allow for our staff to be able to make transitions as needed as we, as we finalize this plan into other roles and other employment with city schools. And so that's what we, that's the reason why we're being thoughtful and kind of planning out toward the 2324 school year. We may be able to make some changes and some additions along the way in the coming years. So we're thinking through how we use our resources well. And in thinking about how we use the various resources we have across the city well, our commitment is that what you will hear from us tonight is not just about what we're doing with CTE programming, which currently serves about 7,000 of our high school students. We have 21,000 high school students, and all of those students need to be career-ready. And so part of what you'll hear is about a reallocation of resources in order to be able to offer different kinds of career readiness opportunities for our young people, because we know one size does not fit all. CTE is wonderful for many of our students and not a great fit for others. But there are other career opportunities that we want to think through for those young people. And so that's what you'll hear about tonight. You'll hear about CTE programs specifically, some changes that we're thinking about making, and how we're looking forward to being able to provide additional programming by reallocating some resources. Pass it over to Kumasi Vines now, who's going to take it from here.
Thank you, Dr. Pfeifer, and good afternoon, commissioners. I'm sorry, good evening, commissioners. So what I want to do right now is just talk a little bit through the context and vision for career readiness. And you can go to the next slide, Dr. Pfeifer.
Yep, give me one second. I'm stuck. There we go.
So we've been engaged in a two-year process to review, reflect on, and improve the opportunities available to our students. We came to the board in June 2019 after having commissioned ESG, Education Strategy Group, to dig into our CTE data. And it has been about 10 years since we did a comprehensive review of our programming, and we felt it was time to take a closer look. So ESG highlighted that we had placed our most rigorous programming that led to high-wage jobs in our entrance criteria schools, and we needed to, we needed to create a greater equity in our programming. And also ensure our programs were aligned to the labor market and develop structures to support student success in our CTE programs. So we then contracted with Project Evident in January this year to continue this work. And in February of 2021, we will present our final plan. So a lot of our decision in how we really engage with this work was data-driven. So our results drove us to do a comprehensive review of our programming, our school and student support, our partnerships and resource allocation. So currently, as Dr. Pfeifer mentioned earlier, 7,021 high school, high school students are in CTE programming. While there are many ways to calculate the certification rate you see on the screen, we feel either way, these rates are too low. So we have the data that says our graduates are earning roughly $15,000 six years after graduation, and we want to do what we have to do in order to change that outcome. So our vision for career readiness, we want to build a system that is prioritizing preparing our students for a living wage, in-demand occupations, consistent with student demand. It's a constant mantra you're going to hear from our office, high-wage, in-demand jobs that are meeting our students' demands. So what that essentially means is we just want to make sure we're preparing our students to be able to take care of themselves and their families and be viable members of the Baltimore city community. We also want to make sure that our programming is relevant and rigorous, and that means making sure that our certifications are better aligned with industry expectations, and that there's a greater coherence and connection with, to the post-secondary pathways and our local workforce committees, communities, and making sure that we're better integrating our work-based learning experiences. And we are fortunate to have a very robust and very eager work-based learning team that's really focusing on creating those connections and relationships with industry partners, employers, in order to help our students gain internships, apprenticeship opportunities, and really just drive increasing the amount and exposure to work-based learning experiences for our students. And as we apply the equity lens to our work, we have to, we have to constantly ask who is able to access CTE programming and who is not. We recognize that within CTE, there are disparities in our access, and we have removed interest criterias from Carver, Mervo, Edmondson to address some of those concerns. We also recognize that two-thirds of our students are not accessing CTE at all, and we are committed to ensuring that these young people still receive the CTE awareness, exposure, and experiences that allow them to thrive in a career when they graduate. But we also want to make sure that we are building a system that uses resources wisely and in a way that can support all of our students toward career readiness, because as we mentioned before, all of our students need to be prepared for successful careers. So, you know, as we are thinking about how are we doing career readiness and advising, you know, if you look at those two, those three spheres right there, and when they converge, the star is the student. So we want to make sure that we have the academic skills that our students are obtaining, the employability, making sure that the skills they are learning are marketable to be applied to the workforce and what the industry actually wants and needs currently and into the future, as opposed to what the market wanted 10 years ago. But we also want to make sure we're integrating some technical training as well. And, you know, CTE is an example of the career and technical education types of training that our students will be able to access in order to complete that picture right there. And, you know, with student advising, as we're moving forward with this program, there's three areas where we want to focus on, and that's career awareness, career exploration, and career preparation experience. And it's really like a work-based learning continuum. We're working with middle grades work group to think how, how to push more awareness through grades six through eight, and also with our college career readiness trajectory that includes at different levels from K through 12 on exposing our students to different types of careers and allowing that exploration activity. And really, the career preparation and experience at last on that arrow right there, arrow right there, is really for our older students, our high school students, so they can actually take what they've learned, the hands-on experience, and apply it to work and be as best prepared as possible upon graduation. And just to reiterate, we want to make sure that our career readiness experience is one that is accessible to all of our students, because all of our students deserve to prepare for careers. CTE is just one way that we provide this for our students. And through the high school choice process, we want to ensure that students have as much information as they need to determine what kind of career readiness experience they want to pursue upon entering high school. So this is just an example of a career readiness plan. We want to support each school in developing a unique career readiness plan. The information that we are providing this evening will show you our proposed changes and new opportunities for each school as we plan for 2324, school year 2324, and it's refreshing our CTE and career readiness program. So the vision that we have for our students, we're working to provide these types, we're working to provide these separate opportunities, and that includes work-based learning program, as I mentioned before. And again, the work-based learning team is building a database of industry connections, internships, apprenticeship opportunities, and working in conjunction with our schools to help create more of these activities or experiences and opportunities in internships and apprenticeships, but also they've been having weekly sessions that, you know, they're taking advantage of being in a virtual space to reach more students. We've had people from the industry or community stakeholders coming in to speak to, to speak to our students about different types of careers. We've had also a speaker come in last week just talk about some of the soccer skills type of things. And, you know, the journey from being a city kid all the way to where our speaker was in their career right now. So really just giving students a real wide array of exposure and awareness about different types of careers and career paths, and some of the realities of the bumps along the way from an adult, a current adult's perspective. So, but we can't do this without our full, without our full community. Some of the names I mentioned, or the speaker I was speaking about a second ago was Joe Jones from the Center for Urban Families, who has a tremendous story and is a Baltimore, Baltimorean through and through, and can really relate to what a lot of our students are experiencing, experiencing. And just him just talking and speaking to life, his experience, I think was really helpful for a lot of our students. We're working with other community members. Phil Crosskey is one actually to talk, to help us understand how we can work with our students along the entrepreneurship track. We have a lot of students that want to be their own business owners. So, you know, we're working with our community to help us think about how to approach this with our students. And that's including our alumni. We have some very vocal and very active alumni populations in the city. And we want to make sure that we have their support and their collaboration in moving forward. I also want to give a special thanks to Commissioner, Commissioner Richardson for connecting us with the team at Carver, that's helping our students rebuild a vacant home. These are the type of connections and relationship building and opportunities that we want for our students to have, and we're looking forward to continuing that. We also just last month kicked off our career readiness newsletter, where we share what's happening in the office and career readiness. Really was introduction for, for myself to the community, because I'm fairly new in the position. But also this highlighting some of the great relationships we have and partnerships we have in the industry that really take the, taking a real interest in helping our students out and getting that experience. So again, it's going to take all of us to make this vision work and give the students the best type of experience that they deserve. So just giving you a little bit about our progress and our preliminary results. So as the slide says, our decision-making process included comprehensive data analysis and extensive community engagement and feedback strategy. So the type of data we looked at was wage data and employment projections. Specifically, we looked at employment projections through the year 2026. We looked at student completion, certification rates in our pathways. We looked at enrollment in our pathways to get a sense of student demand for the different types of pathways we have in CTE. And we're partnering, partnering with schools and teachers to understand what they need to run the program well and what our facilities look like. We also engage our community in a meaningful way by having several community engagement opportunities, speaking with teachers, speaking with principals. Principals actually helped us facilitate quite a few school community meetings. So we spoke with the students and their families. I think as Dr. Pfeifer mentioned before, we had over 80 discussions with stakeholders, 28 conversations with school principals, 12 school communities, hosted a community town hall, and we released a survey to the community for feedback. And there'll be another opportunity for feedback via survey coming up towards the end of this presentation. And as you can see, we had a variety of things from our school community, and the community meetings are still ongoing, and there's one happening tonight, as Dr. Pfeifer mentioned, at Reach. So we're continuing to get feedback and have these conversations to really inform our decisions moving forward, and some of them have resulted in concrete changes. Just making sure my slide catches up with everything else. Okay. So in September, we presented you with our best thinking so far, and we showed you four different scenarios of how CTE could be organized across the city. Based on the data we reviewed and the feedback we received, we proposed the following changes. Maintaining programs with a deep connection to the school, so print education will remain at Mergenthaller, Mervo, and business at Reginald F. Lewis. Expanding pathways that lead directly to a living wage, for example, health and biosciences, information technology, and construction and development. Redistributing programs to ensure equity by adding more programs that would lead to a living wage in communities with low community conditions index, adding programs to the east side and making other programs more accessible. Re-envisioning our teacher allocations and curriculum to enhance some pathways. And we are adding entrepreneurship to the business pathways, or course, as a course in business pathways, and some of our more consumable ones, to make sure we're getting that entrepreneurial experience and kind of direction, as I was speaking about before. Adding teachers to pathways to ensure that we have successful curriculum delivery. And we also are adding teachers to pathways, a pilot of the ninth grade model to provide students with additional time and opportunity to gain stackable credentials. Currently, our programming starts in the 10th grade, but if we look at starting in the ninth grade, it will give students more opportunities to reach our certification levels. So based on the feedback, we went, we have developed a scenario number five. And, you know, we'll get a little bit more detail on that later. This is a new proposal. You know, previously, you have seen the four listed scenarios, but now we're on a scenario number five based upon a lot of the feedback we've gotten and some of the changes we've made. So we decided to prioritize CTE programs at schools, at schools where we have a larger footprint. And this is based on feedback from teachers about the professional support that comes from not being the only CTE teacher at the school. So I'll just give you a second to take that in. And you can see the variance there with six fewer schools, eighteen fewer positions, one fewer close cluster, and four fewer pathways. So with scenario number five, it allows us to increase the number of CTE seats from the current enrollment of 6,090 to 8,700 by the school year 2020, 2324. And it allows us to have more flexible funding to invest in career readiness opportunities for the 12,300 students who are not in CTE. We also have been able to make a meaningful shift in pathways that will lead students towards living wage jobs. And just to note here that JROTC is now being added as a pathway, a CTE pathway, which means we actually will be able to serve even more students.
Kumasi, if I could just jump in here for a moment, just to highlight the importance of, of what Kumasi just showed here. So as you saw in our scenario five, we do change the footprint of CTE across the city. But in doing so, we actually will be able to serve more students and have additional, serve more students, be able to get more students in moving toward occupations that lead toward a living wage, and have additional resources to be able to reallocate towards supporting young people for whom CTE is not the best career readiness fit, for whom other opportunities like dual enrollment or short-term workforce training programs might be more helpful. And so this is just a really significant slide that I want to draw your attention to, because, you know, we may be reducing numbers of programs in some situations, right? But ultimately, more students will be served. Thanks, Kumasi.
Sure. Can you go to the next slide, Dr. Pfeifer?
One second. Sorry, I'm stuck.
Okay, so our commitment is to career readiness. CTE alone is not meeting the needs of all of our students. So for instance, at our alternative schools, many students, they don't have the space in their schedule for four core CTE program. For other schools, we want to go deeper and ensure that our students get the full experiences, rather than spending, spreading ourselves too thin, quite frankly. Our goal is to meet students' needs, and this won't look the same at every school. So you'll see at some schools on the list in front of you that don't have any CTE programs. So we're going to work with them to support their career, career readiness vision that directly and uniquely is appropriate for their school community. So based on the review of existing evidence and community conversations, we've adjusted our recommendations. So I just want to highlight what all the colors on here are referring to. The easiest way to look at it is kind of left to right. So for example, there were some programs that were on the sunset list. They've been read, crossed out. After countless numbers of meetings with the community and this heavy load of engagement, getting feedback, many of them have shifted and moved to the reducing consolidate column. And I, and this is really just a result of listening to the community and factoring in their feelings, their experiences, the context at each different school, and factoring that into our planning where it made the most sense. So as you can see, there's been some changes, and this is really a result of the feedback from the community. And that community again includes our stakeholders, so our families, our students, teachers, principals, and just a lot of the people we've been speaking to over the last several months. Just highlighting a couple of things on this chart. For PLTW biomedical services, biomedical sciences, that does lead, there's high-wage career paths there, but there was limited demand at some schools. So the recommendation was to consolidate for now. So, but we also want to make sure that the location of that program was with other health pathways, and then to work towards building recruitment efforts. With PLTW pre-engineering, again, another program that has links to high-wage careers, but it requires at least a bachelor's degree, and there's relatively limited growth. Over the next 10 years, we're projecting about 700 positions being added. So, and nineteen, the enrollment for each school year 1920 was about 500. And, you know, it is an expensive program. It's about $100,000 per year per program. So, you know, there's a lot of different factors that we have to consider as we're making some of these choices going into the future. But I just want to highlight for this slide that after receiving a lot of feedback from the community, we definitely have made some adjustments. So this right here is just, just a kind of like, you know, map out the level of engagement that we've done. So as we, you know, work to meet the needs of our students, prepare them to be career-ready, we're listening and learning from our teachers. I'm sure there's some teachers in the audience tonight that have seen my face multiple times over the last couple of weeks. But we met with BTU leadership and co-hosted nine teacher town halls, and we went pathway by pathway for those town halls, or cluster by cluster. And we made adjustments to the plan based on their feedback. We are going to support these teachers throughout this process by helping the teachers prepare for any curriculum or certification changes. And we commit, we are committed to limiting as much as possible the number of teachers negatively affected by these changes. As it says on the slide, in the next six months, we're going to be partnering with the Human Capital Office to identify possibly potential impacted staff and have individual conversations with our teachers about potential options into, towards the future. So next steps. So we have additional activities to undertake before we finalize our recommendations. And we're simultaneously preparing for implementation. So as the chart shows in front of you, we are doing a working session tonight. We're continuing to have our school and community meetings through the beginning of the year. But we're all pushing very hard towards February. The February's board presentation is where we will make our final recommendation on this plan and kick off the implementation process. So, and this is for commissioners as well as anyone that may be listening. Details, detailed documents are available at this BaltimoreCitySchools.org/CTE-Plan. It's shown on the screen. And right here, you see our QR code that we actually use quite a bit to get a survey that we've used to obtain feedback from our community. And I invite anyone listening right now that can access that to either scan with your phone the QR code or try to type in that link there. And please give us your feedback. It's extremely important that we have that and understand your voice and your perspective. And we really want to make sure that we hear from you. And of course, beyond tonight and beyond the survey, if there's any feedback or additional information that our families want to give us, please feel free to contact Dr. Pfeifer or myself at the website that's on the screen. And that's City Schools CTE Plan Feedback at bcps.k12.md.us. And again, we'll be sharing our final recommendation to the board at the February 9th meeting.
Thanks so much, Kumasi. I will leave it here so that folks can access the QR code for a little bit more or get to those websites. But I will note for the commissioners that we would love to take questions. And we also have school by school kind of proposals for what career readiness will look at our various high schools, look like at our various high schools. So please let me know if you would like us to go through the school by school and we'd be happy to answer questions as well.
Thank you, Dr. Pfeifer and staff commissioners. I'm going to ask if you, I'm going to, we will open for questions. But will you please be certain to have your raised hand signal so that Commissioner Richardson and I will be able to see those to call you? I see Commissioner McFadden, so go right ahead.
Thank you, Commissioner Chenya. First, Dr. Pfeifer and Mr. Vann and the entire team. I just want, I want, thank you, but this is a huge lift. And I appreciate you all for taking this on and being responsive to the needs of our community and making sure that we, you know, are looking at industry standards, but making sure that our programs are in communities that need them the most. So I just want to say thank you for initiating this process and for helping us to understand it a bit, a bit more. Before we move on, Dr. Pfeifer, I would like to ask if you could just highlight some of what is in Appendix A.
You're on mute, Dr. Pfeifer. You're on mute.
Thank you. Sorry, everyone. I would just say, could you give me one moment? And so part of what we incorporated as part of this appendix, which again is online, is a variety of the ways that we engaged with our community. And so again, not going through everything, but just wanting people to know that we reached out to a variety of different stakeholders. We were able to speak with the principal of every school and in many cases, leadership teams of schools with career and technical education. We started those meetings in June. We started meeting with teachers in June as well. We engaged more recently with students and families. And, and then, you know, there's a huge employer community, obviously, that is in the city. We worked with the Mayor's Office of Employment Development. And then just kind of had an initial outreach to some folks who'd already partnered with the district and those just kind of snowballed into additional people who wanted to connect. And so we really had great opportunities to hear from a variety of people about kind of their, their dreams for what career readiness could look like in the city. Their frustrations about what it didn't look like and how it wasn't meeting needs. Specifically hearing that from some students, some families, even some teachers saying, we have some, we have vision for what this could look like and we'd really like to be able to move it forward. We continue to get survey data. And so at the time that we put this presentation together, these were the top areas that we heard from our families. And we know that many more are engaging with us to tell us what's important to them in, as, as we move forward in this work, really wanted to ensure that student voices continue to be, to be loud as we are working to make these decisions. You know, I think that if I could come away with, you know, a few takeaways from these community meetings that we had. One was really just understanding the passion that so many members of our community have to see our young people succeed, right? And, and I think being able to hear that, you know, sometimes it was coming from people who were expressing frustration. Sometimes it was coming from people who were saying, have you ever thought of? You know, but really knowing that, that there is a real excitement around the city to help us do this work well, I think was, was very important. I think also, as Kumasi mentioned, just the importance of hearing from our teachers on the ground, from students, from families, just understanding how people are experiencing the things that we're trying to do came out of a number of these meetings. Because many times, you know, we have an intent and we've, we've thought it through and we've gotten maybe some initial feedback. And then we talk to people and they say, but practically this isn't working and let us tell you why. And so that came out of many of these conversations as well. So Commissioner McFadden, that's pretty high level, but wanted to be able to share a few of those things. And for folks who are engaging online, you can go and find these appendices with the list of who we connected with. And if you have suggestions for other people we should meet with, we are very open to that.
I appreciate that. And you know that I have sent some folks to have conversations also. I appreciate it. I have a few questions, but I'm going to limit it because I know that there are several commissioners that have questions also. But when I hear you all talking about the ninth grade pilot program that we're considering and thinking about, how do, it made me think about six-year plans. So how do our six-year plans fall in to the, the greater CTE strategy that we're focusing on tonight?
Commissioner McFadden, I'm so glad you're thinking about the six-year plan. That just makes me so happy. So we, so the vision for these individualized student plans is that every sixth through 12th grader gets the opportunity to sit down with an adult who cares about them and knows who they are and to have a conversation about what their interests are, what they're passionate about, what they like to do for fun. I was saying to somebody yesterday, I don't know many sixth graders who necessarily sit down and say, you know, I really want to, to be an architect, say, right? But we do hear about, you know, we do see, hey, you're, you're doodling over there. You've got some great drawings, right? Or you've got a vision for how you're engaging with Legos or various things like that. And so to have an adult who's with this young person, talking about what their interests and passions are and also looking at their, their data, right? We want our students to know their attendance. We want our students to know their grades and when they get to high school, their GPA, right? So that they understand that their interests and passions can be pursued in a variety of different ways. And thinking back to that Venn diagram Kumasi talked about earlier, there's also an academic piece that's really important, right? And they need to be engaging there in order to get where they want to go. And to really have an adult help point them to different opportunities that are available because, you know, that connect with what their interests are. So if we get this right, students will have had those conversations in sixth grade and seventh grade. They'll come into the choice process in the fall and winter of eighth grade with some sense of, of where they think they might be interested in going to high school, right? Because of the various programs. It may be because it's in their neighborhood, but at least they'll have some sense of what's there. And then they will be able to, for instance, go into one of these programs with the ninth grade pilot where they can be in a, in a construction class and get to experience carpentry and plumbing and welding and masonry and kind of get the chance to try all of those out and then decide how they might want to specialize in 10th, 11th, and 12th. So that's the vision of kind of how this will go together. And it really works even in a, in a non-CTE context as well, right? So when we talk about career readiness, our work-based learning team is finding opportunities for job shadows and for internships that don't require you necessarily to be in CTE. But you may just be interested in learning a little bit more about, I'll say, what it's like to be a college professor, right? And how can we get you opportunities and exposure to that world as well? Thanks for your question.
No, I appreciate it. And you, you kind of started talking, well, you talked a bit about the choice process also. And sometimes I've become a little concerned if these six-year plans, you know, if we're not monitoring them and really supporting students in the middle grades. It, it can be, the choice process can potentially be limiting to them if we haven't really thought the middle grade strategy out as far as college and career readiness is concerned, CTE is concerned. So I'm glad to hear you thinking about that. And I certainly would like to hear in the future a bit more alignment in general with our middle grade strategy and CTE and college and career readiness programming. Because I think if we develop a strong enough pipeline, at least to begin that in the middle grades process, I think it will support all of the different scenarios that you all are proposing and lifting and that we're going to have to decide on really soon. So with that, I'm going to move it back to my chair so that we can get to the other points from the committee. Thanks, Dr. Pfeifer.
Thank you. Commissioner Roberts, I see is next. Then following Commissioner Roberts is Commissioner Richardson.
Thank you, Chair Chenya. Thank you so much, Dr. Pfeifer. It was a nice presentation. Thank you, Dr. Pfeifer and team. One of, I have two questions. One of my questions is related to Slide 20. While I didn't see it in the appendix, are you able to provide us with the the top pathway selected by our students?
That is a great question. We did not actually provide that in the appendix. I will have to pull that for you to be exact. But I believe that culinary is one of our top pathways. The CNA program is also an incredibly popular pathway as well.
Is there any potential that any of the pathways that are slated to sunset could also be a part of the, the popular pathways selected? Just, just low wage earning potential?
So that is a great question. Again, I'm going to want to pull the data from our choice team to make sure that I have that accurate. But I do know that we certainly have heard quite, quite a bit from some of our partners with agriculture, right? And I know that we have some data about students showing interest in agriculture at the, at the middle school level when they're choosing career clusters. And so that's actually the information we're taking a look at. We are, have agriculture on the list to sunset related to our locked position. But we also have agriculture at some schools that are being paid for by school dollars and not locked positions, just as a note for you there.
So that kind of piggybacking off of something that Commissioner McFadden just referenced as well as, I believe it was Slide 8 around entrepreneurial, well, around the, Slide 8 was...
Do you want me to pull it up?
Please.
Yeah, absolutely. One, let's do it this way.
Thank you.
Was it this one? Oh, sorry.
No, not that one.
There we go. Okay.
What does entrepreneurial exposure look like in this process? What does it currently look like in as we're sunsetting programs out that were potentially low wage? Was there opportunity within the, the current state of the programs to integrate in better entrepreneurial programming? Because $15,000 is, you know, alarming for most of us, if not all of us. But to see programs like early childhood not flourishing, where quite honestly, during the pandemic, that was an essential, it was an essential industry. So could you speak to me a little bit about what the current state of entrepreneurial curriculum or programming looks like across the CTE program and what that will look like as we're moving it forward?
I am, I'm really glad you asked. So a point of clarification, which probably was not clear in this presentation and may, might be clear in the appendix, but I'll, is that early childhood is actually being embedded into our Teacher Academy of Maryland. So part of what we heard from our teachers actually was that they were, our early childhood teachers said, look, we, we love teaching this program. A few of them even came through City Schools early childhood ed programs and then came back to teach. And, but they said, we recognize that this 90-hour certification that we currently are offering as the certification for this pathway is not leading to a living wage. And so they said, you know, we have an idea about how we might be able to really strengthen and make our early childhood program more robust by combining it with the curriculum from the Teacher Academy program. And in doing so, we extend the amount of content that students are able to learn, right? And we also give students a pathway to earn their paraprofessional certification, which would make them eligible to be part of the pipeline for the district. So when you see early childhood sunsetting, that is the early childhood program as it currently exists. And our goal would be to combine it with the Teacher Academy, provide some additional experiences for students and then queue them up so that they could actually be part of a district pipeline, whether that's working with the youngest ones or working with older students. To your point about entrepreneurship, we have been working more to embed it more recently, just in response to student interest. Certainly, the 2017 report that the Casey Foundation did about listening to young people's voices about workforce highlighted entrepreneurship as something students were really interested in. And we're hearing that as well. And the interest of our teachers. And so we worked with the Network for Teaching Entrepreneurship, NIFTY, and piloted a number of NIFTY courses this, let's see if I get this right, this past, the previous school year, many of which have continued this school year. And so specifically to your question about occupations that might be lower wage, part of our commitment to, in, in keeping our, many of our culinary and our cosmetology programs and not eliminating those programs because we know how popular they are, is to embed entrepreneurship. is to embed entrepreneurship in those programs. So that the young people who are in that, that programming will be able to not just have the skills to cook great food, but also the business skills to be able to cater and kind of start their own thing. Similarly, with our cosmetology students, we're looking at investing in that as well. And I think an ongoing question that we need to answer is what other pathways we might be able to embed that in for, to meet our young, young people's needs and interests.
Thank you, Dr. Pfeiffer.
You bet. Thanks for asking.
Commissioner Richardson?
Thank you, Chair Chinia. Dr. Pfeiffer, you mentioned earlier as an example, architecture. And it just, it just, it made me think that we have local colleges and universities with different types of like explorations that our students could, could experience, right? And so I was wondering, like, if you had areas that you needed more contacts or resources to help you think that through, like, for instance, I know Morgan has a School of Architecture and Planning. And I was wondering, would you want those resources? Or like, how would, i- if we had connections for you, how would you, how could commissioners and, or who, or the public, whoever's listening, be able to provide resources for you? Because I think, as I hear the, the careers that are the most popular, it makes me think, are they popular because students have not explored others or have not been in connection with other types of careers and jobs? And so how, how could we support you in helping our students learn about more opportunities?
I appreciate that question. So Kumasi mentioned earlier that we just brought on board a work-based learning team. And he also mentioned that they've hit the ground running. I, they have done so much work since August when they started. And part of what they have done is expanded our district capacity to respond to opportunities like the ones you mentioned. So each of them are kind of tied to a different industry area. They're developing expertise in those areas. And, and they're also curating a work-based learning database that we hope to be able to share more publicly in the coming months. And so I would, if you have opportunities, would love for you to reach out and we will connect you to the right members of those, of that team. And then what I would say is, please be patient with us because we are going to need to actually plan out and kind of stage how we move forward in this work so that we can really develop the depth that we need to in these pathways in sustainable ways. And so it may be that we say, that's an amazing contact and it's going to take us a few months or maybe it will be the beginning of, you know, or mid 2021 when we really go deep into that pathway and just know that as we are trying to time things out, that, that may be part of, part of the answer. But we would be so grateful because really there is no single pathway I can think of where we have too many resources right now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Reed?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Dr. Pfeiffer. I really appreciate it. I guess Commissioner Roberts made a great point, I think, because it pressed me the last time we met, the $15,000 in terms of the average salary. And it makes me go back and think in terms of, you're doing a great, you have a great approach from the standpoint of looking at life skills first, employment second, and then wages. And I guess I look at two things, I guess it's almost two parts. One, we only have like an 8% certification rate. What's the game plan to getting that lumber up to, say, 40% or whatever? And the other thing is, we talked about pathways. Looking at pathways, would pathways be a situation where you're reframing an idea, using moral persuasion, and not so much tracking? Because I looked at construction, I looked at cosmetology, I looked at food service. The kids may come in saying, this is what I want to do. But is there a tracking process or some mind shift process that makes them look at something else? Thank you.
That is a great question. So I think to your first point or your first question about, you know, how are we shifting away from this $15,000 median income, right? How are we increasing the certification rates? I think this slide we're, we're on right now actually is a key part of this, right? So if we focus on technical skills, and any of our CTE teachers will tell you this, and don't ensure that students have the requisite academic skills, then they will not be able to pass the certification exams, right? The, their, the same reading and math, right? It might be applied differently than in their pre-calculus class, but they're needed for those technical skills. Additionally, I think, you know, the employability skills, some people call them essential skills, the showing up to work, showing up to work on time, right? Being able to take feed, receive feedback, right? Knowing how to advocate for yourself, those are all really important pieces. And so, so I think that, you know, we don't have the luxury of just focusing on the technical piece. And so as we work with our colleagues in teaching and learning in the Office of Special Education, right? And ensuring that our students are getting the academic support they need and quite frankly, the additional supports they might need if they're behind, right? And that, that might require us to schedule differently and to staff differently. We'll then add on top of that the work experiences that will help students build those employability skills. I think those will all help. In addition, we're looking at reviewing the curriculum for each of our, for each of our CTE pathways. So there's also just an issue of, you know, if, if we're not getting the content right, then it's going to be hard for students to meet those certification expectations. And so those are the things that we are initially thinking about as we are, are supporting our students in that area. The other, there are other things that are a little bit more in the weeds, but scheduling is actually really important. Sometimes what happens is that students will be in a CTE pathway and then get taken out of that pathway because they may have failed another course and so need to, you know, complete a graduation requirement. And so they get pulled from CTE. We're, we want to be able to address that, both with kind of clear guidance for counselors about what that CTE trajectory is for a student. And then also by providing more summer school opportunities so that students can make up missed content in CTE over the summer as well. So that gets to your certification question. I think, can you just repeat the second question for me? I'm sorry.
No, I guess in terms of pathways, I guess, how do you establish pathways? Is it reframing, moral persuasion, tracking? Hopefully it's not tracking, but how do you?
It will not be tracking. I, not, while I'm here and my team is here, that's for sure. So I think that this is where the student plans come back in. And this is where Commissioner McFadden's question and push to us on the middle grades work is really important. Because we have the oppor, we, we need to take more opportunities to show students different possibilities that are out there, right? As Commissioner Richardson, I think, mentioned earlier, you know, how many of these things are things that students are just familiar with? And so that's what they gravitate toward. I know that a number of our schools even now have done really great jobs. I know back when we were in person, Mervo used to invite students to come and do tours of all their different programs, right? So you may have been a student from Montebello and you knew about construction or carpentry and you knew about nursing, but you didn't know about engineering or you didn't know about print ed. And so you got the chance to actually see that. One of the things the team has, my team has worked on this year is the development of, working with our communications office, and I appreciate them, to develop some curated content. So that there's actually a CCR, a College and Career Readiness YouTube channel that we have as part of our district YouTube channel where we pulled visits to different CTE classrooms from past years. And we have taken the work-based learning team sessions with different career speakers and put it all in one place so that schools can begin to draw upon that as an easy resource to, you know, help students see different, different things there. The student plans really should play into this. So, you know, if a student is showing that they're really interested in, let's see, they're, they're really interested in design in a variety of different ways, right? That could be, you know, going in, in an art direction, right? It could be going in a cosmetology direction, right? Like, and so we really need adults to be able to help students think through it. And we're going to need to think through how we review and support schools with the student plans so that, and, and check in with students frankly, to hear about their experiences, to make sure that we're not falling into the trap of tracking. I think our students, we, we need to hear from our students on that.
Commissioner Reed?
Oh, that was, that was tremendous. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Oh, okay. I didn't want to stop before you. Okay, thank you. Uh, we have with us Delegate Melissa Wells. And so we're going to offer her the opportunity, I think she has her hand up to ask a question as well.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here. And it's great to see so many people that are just involved in this conversation. I know I've had a chance to talk a lot. I think folks that know me know I always talk about CTE, especially construction pathways. The day I don't, you know, check my pulse. But the question I have, and I came in a little late to it, so perhaps this is already discussed, but a big component of CTE, especially the traditional trades like construction, is the on-the-job component. And specifically, not just that is, that the on-the-job is part of the, the on-the-job training model, but that employment is a key factor of it. And so I'm so curious to know, in terms of the CT pathways and kind of the vision for the future, how much of that future is really digging deeper into how we use the capital construction? As well as, and fingers crossed, we, you know, we get the, the money that we overturn the, the governor's veto, but we get the additional resources for school construction. And so I'm really interested in how we can make sure that we're using, that BCPS is using all of the resources procurement that they have control over for construction, possibly for other elements like food vending, once we can get back to going back, you know, being amongst each other. But what are some of the other pathways, if it's IT? How, what does that vision look like? I know it requires a lot, so I won't hold you to, you know, this grand explanation now. But I do hope that we are really digging deeper into it because I think it's a, a lost opportunity if we're not at least leveraging those CT pathways that BCPS has some type of oversight over. If we're not using it, then I think we're really missing opportunity to support our, our students.
Thank you so much.
Dr. Pfeiffer, Dr. Pfeiffer, before you answer that, because it's, it's a great point that was just made. And I want to just tag on to construction, what about construction management, right? So maybe not the building, manage construction projects and using our procurement to, to help those students that may want to look at the management side of it as well.
That is very helpful. I will start with that last bit and say that there's some room for us to grow there. But I think one of the bright spots that we've had over the past few years has been our 21st Century Program that has actually not only had young people as internship or as interns in partnership with Urban Alliance, but actually has hired a number, I believe at least two of those young people who interned with them. So, you know, that was a great opportunity of a program. We have significant investment, student interns who came in to support construction, and at least two of them have been hired. Right before COVID hit, we had come to an agreement with our IT department to be able to have a number of students, interns in the IT department. And it was going to start during spring break and kind of a, a longer commitment after that that we obviously had to move away from, but hope to be able to return to that when we're in person again. We're in conversations with our operations office and, and speaking with facilities about how we can bring in our different students who have various skills. We have auto programs, right? And we know the district, we have a number of vehicles that, that could use some work. So, so there are a variety of ways there. I will say, just to be transparent, even in our own decision-making process, when we thought about culinary, there was one situation where there was a program that we were initially recommending that, that we closed. And then we realized how much as a district, we, we go to those programs to cater our own events. And so, you know, decided that it was worth keeping that program there and embedding entrepreneurship to allow students to be on track for more of a living wage there. I'll actually pass it to Kumasi as well because I, Kumasi worked at the mayor's office previously and did some work with DPW, the Department of Public Works. And he's been doing some thinking on that end as well.
Thank you. So, you know, I, I love that question because, because I can always speak for an hour on some of my thoughts on that. But even beyond BCPS procurement, just a city residents, you know, there's a definite desire for our city to invest in our students. Currently in conversations with the Mayor's Office of Employment Development to learn more about their connection with, an example would be DPW. They currently run a program called YH2O, which is a water and wastewater, I guess mentoring program that started towards 18, 24-year-olds. But I want to have that conversation about possibly, how can we connect our younger students that are in our construction pathways to actually work on projects of Baltimore? And get that same kind of training and development. As Dr. Pfeiffer mentioned, I'm a former mayor's office employee, but even more recently, I was the bureau head for water and wastewater. So I'm very familiar with that program and how Department of Public Works work, works. And previously, you know, I really wanted to, to try to make that connection with the tons of work that's being done in the city of Baltimore and construction and underground and utility construction. And, you know, not to preach to the choir, but I remember when I was there, working with the tons of contractors, construction contractors and design consultants that we have for the city of Baltimore, many of them said that, you know, they just, we just didn't have the talent here in the city. And part of what we're doing right now is to completely change that perception. But we also need the investment of those, those companies, our partners downtown to help build those pathways. I told you I could talk for an hour about this, but I'm going to wrap up in 15 seconds. This really came to mind when I was with the Bureau of Water and Wastewater several years ago. And I did some kind of mentor talk event at Carver on a Saturday morning. Me and the chief of utility maintenance, the guys that fixed all the burst pipes in the streets. So we went up there and I talked to a senior at Carver. We both retired because it was like eight o'clock in the morning. But he, you know, we talked to him, he's like, he had his OSHA certification. He was graduating with a certificate. I think it was in masonry. I don't recall. But it was things that I'm like, you are so employable and I wish I could bring you right. So let's keep the conversation going. And I think he found a better job. But we have the talent here, we have the hunger for the students. And in the CTE programs, our students are getting that training. I just want to help our office connect our students with the many opportunities out there and keep that pipeline going and keep that city of Baltimore pipeline growing. So I'll stop right there.
I mean, I think, and I don't, I'm, I'm, I don't want to hold the conversation long because there's a lot of practitioners on this call and I value what you're doing and your input. And I would say. And I would say it would be really good to learn more about the advisory committees, and specifically if a big focus of advisory committee is focused on having advisory partners at the table that are focused on really the ultimate goal of the equation, which is once students leave high school, they have the skill set, but specifically, they are being connected with employers that are part of registered apprenticeship programs, that are part of multi-employer, especially in construction, because construction, and it grinds me when people say it's temporary, construction is a project-based industry. And some of those projects also include maintenance, which is routinely done. And so it's not a temporary industry, it's just project-based and it's on a scheduled maintenance base, but people are working full-time across the industry enough to retire, you know, with full pension and benefits. And so I think in my conversations with a lot of workforce folks around construction, a big part that's never talked about or not talked about enough is the jobs piece and getting the commitment from employers. And so I'm hoping that in the finalization process, that the employers will, or that CTE will be pushing up to provide some more assurances about what their plan is to employ and have a certified training. I'll stop there. We have more conversation.
Thank you.
Thanks so much, Delegate Wells. I will also just add that we've had great conversations with the mayor's office of employment development on that front as well, and, and specifically about the jobs at the end, even as we think about the shorter-term workforce training programs that we hope to increase and increase at the high school level for our students, ensuring that the commitment there is not, that the training provider is committing not just to doing the training, but to connect that young person with employment after. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Roberts, I saw your hand up again. Did you have another question?
It actually was answered in the last discussion around mentors.
Okay. Commissioner McFadden?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm thinking about what Delegate Wells, and it's so good to have Delegate Wells on with us tonight. But I'm, I'm thinking about that advisory panel and the, the work that happens in the community, and it, and it made me think about our partnerships in general within the community. And are we thinking about soliciting funding opportunities with some of our community programs and partners to support our CTE and college and career readiness programming? And I know that that is a packed and loaded question and thought to consider, but how are we solicit the, the support from some of our community partners to kind of help fund and, and financially support our career readiness and, and CTE programs? Is my, am I clear in my question?
Yes, yes. I'd lost connection for a second, so please, if I, if I missed any, anything with this response, please just, just jump in. So one of the ways is we are reaching out to the community for, you know, several levels of assistance and help. One is through our PAC and LAC, which is our, the kind of advisory, industry advisory groups, the, the local advisory council, which is more overseeing, you know, our strategy in general and giving, and advising us, they're members of the industry. And PAC, which are the program advisory councils that looks at the actual CTE programming pathway by pathway, to give the industry perspective on the curriculum and, and, you know, just help us guide through that. Financially, we are reaching out to our funders who, especially during this time, many have been very generous in investing in city, in the students of the city of Baltimore. And we are continuing to work with them. I'm actually going to ask Dr. Pfeiffer if she wanted to jump in, because I may have missed some of your question. I'm sorry about that.
Yeah, I, I appreciate the question, and I think that part of, we have a number of people who have already supported us in really incredible ways. I think of BG and me, who supported our restarting plumbing at Mervo, right? And literally came in and said, we will help you pay for part of this teacher's position until you can get on your feet with it. And so there have been some, some great investments. I think that we certainly want to build up more partnerships to make our programs more both sustainable and also able to go deeper, right? When, just to be clear about our funding, we get funding from the federal government through the state with the Perkins Grant. And in that grant, we're allowed to use it for equipment and so for some bigger things. We can't use it for things that they call consumables, right? And so that's anything, if you're in carpentry, that's your wood and your nails. And so there are times when I know that our students could do more. There are many times, many, many times, when our teachers come out of pocket to be able to support things like that. And having partners who would be able to support those components of the work would really make a difference. Again, it's part of why I'm so excited about our work-based learning team as well, just the opportunity to be able to respond quickly, work together with our CTE specialists and our managers who know their, their content really well and the curriculum really well, to be able to say, here's what it's going, this is actually what our team is working on right now, right? Here's what it takes to run this program excellently. And here is where we need some additional resources in order to do that. And so that first work is on our part to make sure that we can lay that out for each of our pathways in concert with the, the voices of industry partners who say, this is what top-of-the-line instruction and programming looks like. And then I, able to have a clear message to our partners about how they could.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Pfeiffer.
Okay, I'm looking to see if, if there are any other commissioners that have a comment or a question?
Commissioner James has her hand up.
Thank you. Commissioner James?
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Pfeiffer and your team for all of this work. I have two questions, I'll toss them both out there and, and let you respond. One is, and, and you may have touched on these, but I'd like, you know, like them highlighted for, for the community, the impacts of this and the relationship with PTEC specifically? And then secondly, as we look at our district from the board level, we're looking at it as a portfolio. So how do charter CTE programs balance, fit in, supplement, or complement what we're already doing, or the direction we're trying to move? Because I'm not exactly sure your relationship with, with, you know, with, with, with the charter organization. So if you could, could talk to both of those points, thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. So for those who may not be familiar, PTEC is our pathways in technology, early college, high school. We have three PTEC programs in the city, one at Dunbar that focuses on health sciences, one at Carver that focuses on IT and cybersecurity, and one at New Era that focuses on transportation and logistics. And these PTEC programs are unique in that they are essentially a nine-to-14 model. Students who come into PTEC start taking college classes after their freshman year and have the opportunity to earn their associate's degree in partnership with Baltimore City Community College within four to six years. So some students might earn their associate's and their high school diploma in the same year, other students continue on, continue taking those college classes after they graduate from high school. And so the programs that we have here actually all have a CTE component. And so this is a little bit technical, but the way that the state looks at each of these programs, the project lead the way biomedical program is the CTE program for PTEC at Dunbar, focusing on health sciences. The cybersecurity programming and the computer science programming is tied to what the students take at Carver. And then our students do much of the specific transportation CTE work in concert with the college over at New Era. And so we do consider PTEC as kind of a special member of the CTE family, but also really a model of where we want to go and the opportunities we want to provide more of our students. So if we do this right, and I think we're on our way there, some of the reallocated resources that we want to use will actually be invested in dual enrollment opportunities tied to career, so that students will be able to get college credit in areas that will lead them to, to being able to get a leg up and a higher entry wage in a job, right? When they, when they leave those programs. And so there's a, there's a real mix here of college and career that I think is an opportunity for our students. You know, I was speaking to someone today about how, you know, in, in addition to just having CTE programming, what we could really say is you can get similar coursework and get college credits for it, right? So, and we know that once students earn some college credits, especially in high school, it puts them on a better trajectory to finish those college credits and graduate. And so I think there's an opportunity for us to really look at how college and career intersect and not to think of them in separate ways. The conversation we have in our office frequently is that for students, students don't typically think in a college bucket or a career bucket, right? They're thinking through their post-secondary options and trying to figure out what's next. And both the PTEC program and where we're going with career readiness, I hope we'll really be able to reflect that a little bit more. To the second question about charters, I will say that we are really grateful that we have charter schools that do have CTE programming, and we work with them to understand what fits their vision, what fits their ethos, what they're trying to do instructionally at their school, and then what programs fit into that frame. And then, in many ways, we step back and we allow them to, to kind of create, you know, they, they have the pathways that are governed by MSDE structures and regulations. And so we do engage on that part of it. We do help where we can with staffing, and we do make sure that, that they get access to the various opportunities that are coming across our plate. And I think that's an area we can even grow in. But then we really let them do their thing with the programming. Our charters have many great contacts and connections that they have been able to really use to kind of galvanize different ways of thinking. And we really want our relationship with our charters to be one in which we're learning from them and they're learning from us, and we have the opportunity to exchange ideas in that way. So we have actually further conversations to be had with our Office of New Initiatives and make sure that as we make these shifts with CTE and career readiness, that we can continue to be supportive of our charter schools. And, you know, we did hear in the whole, in the listening process, as we went through this, we did hear from our charters about ways that we could improve. And so we're taking all that on board and hope that as we move forward, we'll be able to do so with mutual learning on both sides.
Thank you very much. Do we have a set of measurable metric goals? So in five years, we hope to have X number of programs in X number of schools with X, you know, graduation rate. Are, are there those very concrete steps? And if so, again, to loop the charters in, since we're, you know, as a board, we're, we're a portfolio district, so having them not included in this conversation specifically, you know, is, is challenging in board members, I think, to frame it as a whole composite. But are tho, are those targets there? And is there a way we could set up sort of a, either a formal or an informal dashboard that board members can really see and community can see where you're making incremental progress towards those? And also so our P3 partners can say, oh, I see someplace I could help, and they can jump in.
That is incredibly helpful. So that is work that is in progress. We are, as our work-based learning team kind of gets settled in, we're thinking through kind of specific targets that we'd like to reach for students getting access to work-based learning experiences and what that needs to look like. We also have a college and career readiness dashboard kind of internally at the district that we're working to get our CTE data into so that we can use that and principals can easily access that. So I appreciate that point, and I think that's something that I would like to circle back with you on so that we can just follow up on, on how we can do that in an effective way that allows us to check on where our traditional and charter schools are.
Absolutely. And then the last question that I have, Madam Chair, is.
Commissioner James, before you leave the charter, I think Ms. Alvarez might have some clarification to add to that response. I, I want to let her do that before you move on.
Absolutely. Perfect. Thank you.
Ms. Alvarez there?
Yep, sorry, speaking on mute. So you can hear me. So, um, yeah, just to add on to what Dr. Pfeiffer was sharing, for charter schools, remember, they develop their own plan, they revisit that plan on a routine basis in terms of their goals around what they want to offer to students that's aligned to their vision, vision for chartering. They're very much part of this conversation, will continue to engage with Rachel's team and with them, you know, through these months to make sure we're listening to that. But there's a responsibility that they have and is an autonomy that we want to make sure we're able to protect, and how they envision what their programs are. As a board, you hold them accountable around college and career readiness? That's like an indicator that we look at in Renault, and how they're doing on that, and how they're meeting student needs. And so they're absolutely an important part of this conversation, but how that looks is different because we have to be respectful of their role, right? You've contracted with them to make certain academic decisions for themselves about what they want to offer as programs. And so it's just that layer of sensitivity that we need to have when we're thinking about the charter and contract school context. But we definitely, you know, they've been part of conversations, as Dr. Pfeiffer, and we'll continue to talk about that. So they're learning from this work and from this research, and it's helping shape their planning as they, you know, submit their proposals around what their vision wants to be, and as they engage the Office of College and Career Readiness about what they want to see in their schools. But remember, they do that work with their boards and with their school communities. And so it's just a balancing of how we do that.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
And I'd also just sort of add, though, that if, if we're giving a comprehensive picture of what's going on in the district, that having a way to, to acknowledge that is a helpful piece. Question, if I may, Madam Chair, is to Dr. Pfeiffer again, is there conversation or thought in your longer-term plan about pushing this back into elementary school? You know, we know, we know that we lose kids often in an urban setting prior to middle school and, and, you know, and they start, we get to start to have some attrition. We have some students that, that really need to see that pathway earlier. So can you talk about if you have any possibilities or any looking at pushing earlier into elementary school, whether it be career exploration, whether it be, you know, training or skills, or even, you know, I don't, I don't, I don't want to limit what it might be, so.
I appreciate that, that question, and we absolutely need to ensure that career is just a, a point of conversation for our students throughout their time at city schools. And Kumasi mentioned earlier that we had developed a college and career readiness trajectory that kind of has more, it's more social emotionally focused, you know, in the earlier years, but definitely has some key connection points for students to make with careers, with, you know, thinking about the future. And we want to, you know, in, in many cases, our school counselors are rolling that out now, they're the ones implementing it at schools. Part of what we want to do is to be able to develop meaningful resources for our counselors, our social workers, our teachers, to be able to connect those, make those career connections, and quite frankly, college connections to students. those career connections, and quite frankly, college connections to students as it fits in the day-to-day. And so we need to think a little bit more about what that looks like, but I think that, you know, a teacher shouldn't, we would, I would like it to be such that a teacher doesn't have to go digging to go find, actually, I just saw someone post on Twitter yesterday, and they were looking for a guest speaker to, they just read the book Hatchet, and they were looking for someone who kind of did outdoor, extreme conditions kind of experiences, right?
I saw that, and I just reached out to a friend of mine.
Yeah.
Who finished the Iditarod Trail as a running race this, this summer. Yeah, so she ran the Iditarod course in Alaska. So I reached out to her and tried to connect her to that teacher. So, yeah, that's awesome.
Thank you for that. And that's, that's exactly the kind of connection that I think clicks for a student, right? So, so how do we figure out how to kind of maintain these resources? Maybe we just crowdsource them, but maybe we can say, when we're reading Hatchet, here are a group of people who have said that they're willing to engage, right, so that young people can really get a full experience and not just, you know, have read the book. I, as we were talking as a team the other day, part of what we were discussing was that we would like to see college and career embedded into the things that other, that are happening in the classroom. We shouldn't be the only ones talking about what happens after you graduate, and we're not, right? And, and so I think it's incumbent upon us to figure out how we equip our teachers, other adults, counselors who are in the schools, to know that if there's a career day, here's who you can call. If you're talking about this topic, here's how you can reach out and get some connections. And I think that would make it feel a little bit more seamless for our schools and really give our students what they need. So let me get back to you on that as well, as we develop that over the next several years.
Looking forward to it. Thank you.
Commissioner McFadden, I see your hand.
Thank you, Commissioner Chin, Madam Chair. Dr. Pfeiffer and team, we've received, as, as we all know, the board has received quite a bit of feedback from our community around Reginald F. Lewis's agriculture program. Are you able to talk a little bit about, about that? I know that it's in the appendix, but are you able to just uncover a little bit more about the changes to, to that particular program?
Sure, absolutely. So we have received quite a bit of feedback as well, and just appreciate the way that both local and folks around the state have really galvanized around their support for the agriculture pathway. We do have an agriculture program at Green Street Academy, and as we think through kind of our investment as a district in the variety of different career pathways in which we could invest, our intent was to kind of focus on that particular program as the, the place in the city where students could really go deeper with agriculture and, you know, connecting with the resources that many people have helpfully mentioned and shared with us. As we think through Reginald F. Lewis and think through who Reginald F. Lewis was himself, part of what we really want to do there is to go deep in business and think through what entrepreneurship could look like for that school and kind of delve deeper in that, in that way, kind of in, in thinking about the, you know, thinking about the, their namesake, the school's namesake, and, and how we might make the connection there. That said, I think that we certainly have learned a lot through this process. Well, I'll speak for myself. I have learned a lot through this process related to the various possibilities with agriculture. And I think that one, one of the things that, so part of, part of the reason why we wanted to pause on kind of, and really wanted to focus on one program rather than multiple, was the need to make sure that we can provide every student in the program with the meaningful work-based learning opportunities and connections that would be, that would help them get to career in that way and, or in that area. One of the things that I do want to be really clear about is that opportunities to engage in career readiness in a variety of different areas are not restricted to career and technical education. And I think if we ever communicate that that's the only way for students to pursue different career paths, then we'll really have done our young people a disservice. Right now, just under 7,000 of our 21,000 students are in career technical education. As we expand it, it'll get 9,000, but we still need to have opportunities for students to pursue their interests. So we have a Great Kids Farm. We have a number of great connections with many of our local urban farms. I know that I have seen Farmer Chippy as, who's come to a number of board meetings and spoken to us and is engaging with young people. And so we want to support that. We want to support students getting exposed to agriculture. It may not always be in a four-course pathway that's approved by MSDE. It may be in other ventures that we create. It may be in starting Future Farmers of America Clubs in some of our schools and really equipping students who are in environmental sciences classes to really pursue that in different ways. And so I appreciate the opportunity to talk about this. We have heard much from our community supporting agriculture, and I want them to know that we, just because we are not moving forward with multiple programs through CTE does not mean that we will stop supporting our students' opportunity to engage with agriculture and the various work-based learning opportunities that come with that in our various schools.
Dr. Pfeiffer, I appreciate that response, and I'm going to hold you to that with particularly that Reginald F. Lewis School community, because we heard so much from them. I just think that, to your point, and I agree, sometimes a, a way that students and a community can engage with a particular career pathway is not necessarily, to your point, in a four-year package. I understand that. I just think that we have to be thoughtful with this community because we've heard so much. And I know firsthand the work that those young people have been doing. I mean, even down to going to farmers markets and seeing the young people, very engaged. And yes, there is entrepreneurial element to, to what they do. So I appreciate you saying that. I just think that we really have to be sensitive to what they are advocating for and thoughtful about the way that we transition programs there and in all of our, our school programs. Because when I think about, and I know, and I know that we can't really go into staffing or personnel decisions here in this, but when I think about that particular school, perhaps losing a program, I also think about potential shifts in staffing too. So it's just me thinking out loud, us having to be thoughtful in the way that we look at that program there and support them, to your point, in figuring out other ways to engage in the agricultural program that is there and that that community has been advocating for. So I just wanted to make sure that we, we raise that tonight, because I think it's important.
It absolutely is. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Doc.
And you can follow up with us on that.
Thank you. Now, Commissioner James, I see your hand. Is that for another question or is it still up?
It's still up. I was like...
No problem. I'm gonna look again, make sure, any other commissioner, any other comment, questions from commissioners? I'm giving some wait time here. Okay. If not, then I want to thank Dr. Pfeiffer, Mr. Vines, I want to thank everyone for the conversation this evening and the questions. And if you would put that last, the slide back up, Dr. Pfeiffer, if you could, with where people can continue to, you had one about offering feedback. Just a reminder that this process is still ongoing. The, again, this slide is showing ways to continue to engage. The board will, will be still listening to comments as well as the CTE staff itself and folks who've been working within the community and our, and city schools around this strategy and plan that we want to put forth. Reminder that the board will, will be voting on this in February, early February, so there is still time, if you would like to, to share your thoughts with them. And if there, if, I'm not seeing anyone else with a comment, again, I want to thank everyone for being with us this evening and indicate that this will end our work session and have a, please be safe, have a good evening. Thank you for your attention this evening. And again, thank you, Dr. Pfeiffer. Thank you, Mr. Vines, for the work that has been done.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.